All right, we're gonna, we're gonna call this meeting to order. And time is 11:30, and we're gonna stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, and our God, individual liberty and justice for all. Thank you, and good morning. Prior to roll call, I would like to make clear for the record of this meeting, and it should be reflected in the minutes, that at least a portion of this board meeting is conducted pursuant to California Government Code Section 54953, and that Director Nelson is in Shafter, California, and will be participating by speakerphone. In accordance with the Ralph M. Brown Act, the teleconference location has been identified on the agenda for this meeting. Clerk Berd Mudes, will you please call the roll?
Yes, good morning. Thank you, Vice President Estrada.
Here.
Director Aguilar.
Here.
Director Bianco.
Here.
And Director Nelson.
Here.
Thank you, and I will note for the record that President Powell will be absent for today's meeting.
Thank you. I would like, I would now like to request that Director Nelson respond to the following questions. One, Director Nelson, can you hear me well?
I can hear you well, Vice President Estrada.
Thank you. Two, were you able to hear our proceedings on this and up until now?
I have, yes.
Do you have a copy of the agenda for this meeting?
I do.
Have you posted the agenda at the location where you are?
It is, and I'm looking around, and there's no public presence here this morning.
Thank you. Is your location reasonably accessible to the public such that any member of the public could participate in this teleconference from your location if he or she wished to do so?
Yes, it is.
Is there any member of the public there, there with you, who would like to participate in the public comment portion of this meeting or otherwise address any agenda item for this meeting?
No, there is not.
Thank you. Okay, and as a reminder, all votes for the meeting must be taken by roll call. And we are now in the public comment portion of the agenda. This is the time set aside for public comment. Members of the public may comment on any matter appearing on the agenda. Under the provisions of the Brown Act, the board is prohibited from taking action on items not listed on the agenda. Please address the board at the podium. Limit your remarks to three minutes, and if you wish, state your name and address for the record. Clerk Berd Mudes, do you have any members of the public wishing to speak at this time?
Vice President, I did not receive any blue cards. I will check online to see if we have any members of the public. If so, please use the, please use the raise hand feature, and I will call on you at this time. I do not see any at this time.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, we have one item before us today. This is the ratification of Resolution Number 2023-25 of Declaration of Local Emergency Regarding Tropical Storm Hillary. Making the presentation to the board this morning is Rick Aragon, Director of Finance.
Good morning. So, as was stated, this item, at least the action item for today is, is for the board to ratify an emergency resolution in response to our response as a district for Tropical Storm Hillary. The item from a financial point of view is really to try and remove any, well, as many obstacles as possible as we submit for reimbursement with CAL OES to make sure that we're eligible. Normally, as long as the jurisdiction in which we're operating, so County of Riverside or Imperial, if there's an emergency declaration there, that would be considered to be sufficient, but the state would not give a clear answer on an official yes. That is the only thing that we need. So, as a matter of prudence, doing our own declaration would seem to be the path of least resistance. And so, General Manager Barrett did that declaration, but it needs to be ratified by the board. So, that's the action item for you this morning. And then, we do have two other informational updates planned, one from our Assistant General Manager Dan Charlton on operational impacts, and then our Director of Service, Scott Barrett, on options for customer relief, or at least ideas there. And so, open to any questions.
No, I don't have any questions. I think we might be ready for the presentations.
Yes. Thank you.
Would the board like to take action to ratify the resolution at this point or do it after the presentations?
We could do it now.
Yeah.
Mr. Vice President, I will move to confirm our ratified Resolution Number 2325.
Second. All right, can we please get the, there's a motion, there's a second. Can we get the roll call, please?
Yes, Vice President Estrada.
Aye.
Director Aguilar.
Aye.
Director Bianco.
Aye.
And Director Nelson.
Aye.
Thank you. Let pass this.
Thanks, guys.
Four zero.
Hi.
Hi.
I think.
Waiting for the video, are you?
Yeah, Scott Barrett's group was kind enough to go out this weekend and get some emergency video and combine that with some of the damage that we've got in other areas from the first tropical storm. And so, I'd like to show this first. I don't intend to commentate too much. But, believe it or not, this first one, it's kind of backwards. We, this is from the canal breach that we had from Friday night storm, and I'll go into a few details after the video. But the canal breached in two locations, so we're gonna show you some of the damage from the Chocolate Mountains, so. So, this is an area down in Nylund, so it's at the end of the upper canal where the midcanal starts. They got 4.9 inches of rain in six hours. We have training dikes on the bombing range that convey the water to the siphons. And, believe it or not, some of the areas were inundated over and above and hit the canal in various locations. There's a sample of a siphon from the upstream side. My understanding is that there's one issue that we had where it breached into the old canal. So, in order to do repairs, we're gonna have to get the water down before we can get into some of those areas. But it was significant. We got canal flows down to about 150 CFS whereby we were able to get in, mobilized Saturday morning. There's a perfect example of how bad, it isn't even supposed to hit in that area. It went through a berman almost into the canal, and that's an area that shouldn't get any flows. This is whitewater after the tropical storm event. That's starting at the interstate, and I think you've seen the videos showing, or the photo showing Bridge Haven was undermined. We have four miles of channel that needs to be rebuilt from scratch. Some of it that's typically 20 feet wide is now 300 to 400 feet wide. So, I'll get into the details of what we're intending on doing after the fact. But we are coordinating with Metropolitan to try to expedite that. This is, this, it went under the Highway 111 bridge and hit our sluicing structure. And our sluicing structure, if you can imagine, is typically 12 feet high or so. It's completely filled with sediment all the way through. So, this is looking completely downstream. We got in the range of 8,000 CFS in this area. We don't really know because our USGS gauges started, stopped working. But I can tell you that in Indio at Monroe Drop, we reached 24,000 CFS, which was more than the February 14th storm, which topped out at 22,200. This is the drop structure at Indian Wells Golf Resort. They have an operation and maintenance agreement. There are two drop structures that have been undermined. They actually have a project where they're gonna be, where they've applied for federal funding to do new drop structures. But it undermined the drop structure and then cut back and started to back scour to Eldorado Bridge. So, CVWD mobilized immediately to try to slow that back scour down, and we were successful. So, we went in and did the work where we put the channel back into a trapezoidal state. And now, we have a meeting later this week to discuss with Indian Wells how to move forward. So, this is, the most damage in the valley was, believe it or not, from Upper Mission Creek, which received about 11 and a half inches of rain. Morongo and Upper Mission Creek is not protected. We don't have 100-year flood protection. But believe it or not, they say it was a thousand-year storm, so there was a 0.1% chance of it happening. The sediment came down, overtopped the freeway at Date Palm, and then caused significant damage in the Date Palm slash Visachino area. That's a gas station there in the corner, AMPM, I believe, or it used to be. So, it come down through there, and then it, a lot of the flows also stayed between the railroad and Interstate 10 and caused damage all the way down. It overtopped the freeway again into Thousand Palms. But as you can see, the roadways had significant damage and devastation to some of the houses. Some of the silt was three feet high up against garage doors. We did go into the area a week ago Friday, and we tried to help with some of the areas. We got some of our valves exposed, our backflows, and some of our fire hydrants. But here's another example. The railroad's been working nonstop, but the flows stayed in between the railroad and Interstate 10 and went, continued to go east and ended up in Jack Ivy Ranch, Ivy, or, what is it? Ran, Jack Ivy Ranch, yeah, that's right. So, there's nothing we can do in that event, and believe it or not, we have a Phase 1 of Morongo or North Cathedral City in the works. But even if we had Phase 1 done and Phase 2 done, it would still only protect from 100-year, and this was a thousand-year event. So, it would have still overtopped even with probably $100 million worth of infrastructure. That's how big this storm was. So, I'll give some details of the first storm. Thank you for the video, by the way. I'll give you some information on the first storm, and then I'll tell you about, we were hoping to have a great weekend last weekend, and it didn't happen, so I'll leave it at that. I talked about Upper Mission Creek, 11 and a half inches in 12 hours, thousand-year event. Whitewater Canyon at 5.9 inches and Snow Creek at 7.4 inches respectively. We lost all four miles of conveyance channel. We estimated that we could get water to start being delivered in eight weeks and 16 weeks above 400 CFS. And we have coordinated with Metropolitan at their request to have them come in. So, they've actually mobilized the exact same amount of equipment that we are using. So, we're hoping that that time cuts in half, so from eight and 16 weeks down to four and eight weeks for under 400 and above 400 CFS. We have two 800s and two D8s working, and they have two 150s and two D8s. So, we have eight pieces of equipment working in about a 1.7-mile stretch, so we think we can hit that hard. They just mobilized onto the site today to begin the work. We are working on a very small letter agreement through CAL-WARN, and it's just an agreement to outline that they've agreed to help at their cost. All we're responsible for is the fuel. So, they pay their own operators, their hotels, and the rental equipment as well. And, you know, obviously, the reason that they're doing that is because it'll get us water in the ground quicker. So, expediting deliveries in this state when we have large water allocations and no place to put it, they see there's a return on investment by facilitating the conveyance channel rebuilding, so. We also had, we're coordinating with Southern Cal Gas in Kinder Morgan. There are four gas lines under our channel, believe it or not, and some of them not that deep. They've had significant issues, and they are actually onsite, starting to bypass around the South Cal Gas 30-inch pipelines, and they're gonna take 1,200-foot length, and they're gonna drop it further down, so they hopefully don't ever have to get into this situation again. And we are coordinating very closely. They're estimating six to eight weeks to do that work. Moving on, with the Cathedral City and the devastation in that area, and all the sediment flows that came down between the railroad and Interstate 10, we also had significant sanitation issues. So, gravity lines don't work when there's a bunch of sediment, so we had four blockages in Cathedral City that they were able to get out, but they worked four days straight at Bob Hope and the railroad. We had about half a mile of pipeline completely full, and we had to go in 14 different manholes and try to do, jet out the entire length of the 2,500. We're just getting done today, believe it or not. So, it's been a really hard week. They've been working night and day with bypasses. And to be honest, I do want to commend my guys. They've been work, most of them have been working, especially equipment operators, 14 days straight. Yesterday was their first day off, and I just, we didn't have the heart to make them work Labor Day when they're gonna come back and work 12-hour shifts, so I did want to thank them for that. The other thing, domestic water, they lost an 8-inch pipeline on Dillon Road as a result of the Upper Mission Creek flows. They were able to get in and get people back in service the same night. They worked two shifts, 16-hour shifts straight to be able to get that done. And then, obviously, the other major thing that was on the news and collections was we had a forced main break on Washington and Fred Waring, and they were able to get in, do traffic control, and complete that repair in about two days. So, I think they did a great job there as well. I want to commend my collection staff. I think the video showed the Indian Wells area extremely well. Again, we put the trapezoidal back so that it could be able to take flows, and the city, we're gonna talk to them about how quickly their funding is gonna come for the two grade control structures and whether they need to do temporary repairs to the existing grade controls before we make them or before they get the permanent improvements in place. From the first storm in the lower valley, we had significant stormwater agricultural drains inundated. Some of them were just blocked. We were already in doing repairs to King Street, Avenue 84, Avenue 82, and Avenue 68. So, we were already starting to work on that, and then we got hit again. So, and the second time, which I'll get into, was significantly worse, especially in the Oasis area. And we are, we have the responsibility to put back a low-flow roadway on Lincoln in the channel for the Torres Martinez. We expect to have that done by the end of the day tomorrow. Yeah, so, after working 10 or 12 days straight, I really was hoping to get the guys some time off to spend with their families this weekend. We got hit, I think, about 3 o'clock on Friday. It was bad in Indio and Palm Desert in some areas, completely unexpected. I just looked at the NOAA gauges maybe an hour before that, but this one didn't come from the northwest or from the south. It came from the southeast, from Arizona, and it hit over the Chocolate Mountains. And we got 4.8 inches of rain in six hours, which, again, believe it or not, thousand-year event. I don't come up with these. Tess Fay did some analysis, our PhD in hydrology, he did some analysis. So, again, a 0.1% chance. I guess we should buy a lottery ticket, I assume. But it hit that area very well, so, or very hard. Nylund, Mecca, Oasis, North Shore, basically, everything south of, I hate to say range, but 66 south got hit the worst on both sides of the valley. We had, the first thing, we had, we had two canal breaches, as, as the video showed. So, the first thing we had to do is go in and protect water. We had to go in and mobilize equipment to put earthen embankments back, which we have done for the most part in areas where we can get in. Again, we're, we're gonna rent some hurricane pumps to be able to de-water the old canal in, from siphon seven to about nine to be able to do those repairs. And we expect to have those mobilized, worst case, tomorrow. But I want to commend the control operators and the staff. We're able to get the water down. And if you can imagine, when the rain comes, everybody turns off. So, not only do we have too much water in the canal, nobody wants it. So, our lake level was almost seven and a half feet, so we had a hard time trying to find a place for the water. And then, we had the breaches whereby that canal is stacked because we had the lake full and everybody turned off. And we had to find ways to get that water downstream of there to be able to stop the water from going outside of the canal. So, I think they did a great job at that. So, we have a temporary canal embankment in place. We, again, areas, so the way it works is from the mountains, we have berms conveying it to the siphon under crossings. And then, the flood flows are supposed to go over top of the box structures of the canal in specific areas based on the size of the watershed and the location. But Mother Nature didn't necessarily listen, so we got hit in some other areas, but, and they were overwhelmed outside the siphon areas, which is very unusual. We haven't seen that before, not to this extent. So, as far as a permanent fix beyond the compacted embankment temporary earthwork, we've identified 24, 24 panels in one breach that need to be repaired with concrete. It's all the way down to the invert, and six in the second breach. So, we have 30 panels that need to be replaced. My recommendation would be to probably provide a change order to the midcanal contractor and potentially ratify after the fact, but I don't, because the compacted embankment's in pretty good shape, I think we're fine for now. But I do believe that they are a concrete expert, and they could get in and do the work, and I've coordinated with David Wilson. They have the ability to, and that's probably the right recommendation, to fix the canal. Because bringing the canal flows back up, because it's still summertime, it's still 100 degrees, with a compacted embankment and 144 feet long of just earth is very scary when you have 11 feet of water coming at you. So, I do think that we should get in and do that sooner rather than later. 17 of the 30 panels are in the upper section, so you can still keep about four and a half feet of water in while you do that. But the section that's in the lower portion, down to the longitudinal joint, about a foot above the invert, is gonna need a cofferdam setup, and we have the cofferdams from our previous project, so they would mobilize, you know, 160 feet de-watered, and then they could pour the concrete in the dry, which I would recommend. Yeah, so, Oasis, we had additional damage, significant damage. So, imagine King Street and all the other areas are full of sediment, and now, another event hit, and those agricultural drainage trapezoidal channels don't have any room to convey the flows. So, it, flows went all over the Oasis area, did a lot more damage. Avenue 84 was hit really hard, 76, 66 was hit quite hard. Buchanan Street was hit quite hard, King Street again, and then Lincoln as well. So, we had a mainline break on the 97-1. We were able to repair that mainline break on the weekend. We also had a subline get undermined. We are replacing about 100 feet of that subline on the 97-1 today. Our staff went in, removed the other one on the weekend, and then built a trench and the bedding to be able to go in and install today, so that'll be done, which is great. The other thing that I would say is, found out this morning that the domestic high line that we've replaced temporarily before, and then engineering did an improvement project, with the amount of rainfall we got, that was undermined again. It was exactly two years ago on September 1st, which is interesting. But that high line is a massive high line that serves Highway 86 and down to the Salt Sea. And there's not, there's, I don't know the length, I think it's 400 feet long, and it's above ground. And we have abutments or concrete pillars, if you would say, underneath of it, and the storm flows blew those out again, even with the semi-permanent improvements that were done. So, pretty important situation. I think we'll mobilize to the center, do what we did for the temporary fix, and get some scaffolding underneath of the center so we can take the weight of the high line, probably today and/or tomorrow, to get that into a state that we can take most of the weight off. The main channel, Alabasi is, as you know, is working between Avenue 54 and 58. 58 downstream, basically, we don't have a pilot channel anymore, so the lower flows, we can't convey them to the center of the channel. It's basically flat. So, we're gonna have to go in and go from Avenue 58 down to 72, which is seven miles, seven and a half miles. We're gonna have to build that pilot channel again. So, what we're trying to do now is prioritize, first of all, identify all the damage that is done, and then prioritize it, and then schedule it. So, some of this work is gonna be six months or more to be able to do, you know, erosions on the canal embankment that are small, some of the grading. But some of it's paramount that we do that now, so we're still in the process of prioritizing what needs to be done immediately, what needs to be done for access, and then what can take a little more time to be able to complete it. So, that's kind of where we're at. We're, we're committed to getting, getting back to a place where we can at least provide a level of service to our customers that we need in a safe and efficient manner and convey the water. And I think by Friday, we'll be in a really good spot to be able to give an update on what the future looks like from a one-month, three-month, and six-month perspective, so. The first event, we estimated the damage within our facilities to be 3.9 million. We have not done an estimate yet as of this weekend, so. We submitted the, as Rick alluded to, we submitted the summary of estimated damages from the first event to the county who submitted it to CAL-OES. We identified all the areas on a spreadsheet, so we feel very comfortable about that. And I'm not envisioning that there's more than a million dollars this time, but I'm not sure, honestly. So, we'll submit the same thing as soon as we have a better pulse on exactly where we're at.
Thank you, Dan. I was about to ask the figures, and so you've answered that. But will, is this declaration good enough for both? Or do we have to come back and do a separate one for the second estimate?
I believe it's good enough for both, but that's a good question. We were already covered under CAL-WARN. We didn't have a, a declaration the first time, I don't believe. I think that under CAL-OES and our typical requirement, as you know, we're still waiting for funding reimbursement from the February 14th event. Somewhere in the range of $2 million, but I believe it should handle both events, but.
We may have to do a separate declaration.
Yeah, Mr. Vice President, this is, this is Jeff Ray. I would just mention that the first event had a state of emergency declared, and so that brought this process forward. Since we don't have that yet for this second event, that's okay. We have a CAL, open the CAL-OES declaration that applies to any type of event. So, we're okay for now if there is a, an actual state of emergency or some indication that we need to adopt the second one, we will. But for now, we're covered for both.
Yeah, that's a good point, Jeff. You know, it's not called, I don't know why they even have a name for this one. And I don't know that FEMA ever actually declared an emergency either. It's just CAL-OES. And Sylvie just alluded to that most of the damage, not all, but a lot of the damage from the event this Friday was actually in Imperial County, not in Riverside County. Riverside County from 66 to 86 did receive significant damage on our drainage structures and other. But as far as the canal breach, that's all on Imperial County. Who's they?
Imperial.
Feel free. Just having a little private conversation.
So, this is Sylvia. My understanding, and I haven't confirmed, but I was verifying with some Imperial County folks. I know they met with CAL-OES, or they have an 11 o'clock meeting, I believe, that's still ongoing. And they will be looking potentially to declare a second separate emergency for Friday's event because of the extent of damage incurred for that particular event. Nothing confirmed, but I'm getting details on that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I know Imperial Irrigation District, their east high line is earthen, and they had significant damages and breaches along that. As did the railway, they were all over the place. So, there are a lot of different entities out this week in Imperial County trying to, trying to work on some of the damage as far as prioritized damage from an emergency perspective.
So, I just, so Imperial County did proclaim an emergency for Friday's storm on this past Saturday, and their Board of Supervisors is scheduled to ratify that declaration.
Okay, I, before we get into comments, I'm just gonna make my comments first. But I just want to make sure I fully digested everything you mentioned. It sounds to me, in general, that since the last storm hit, a lot of the damages happened. Call it Washington that way, in the first storm. And there was a lot of attention that we, that we put there the last several weeks. And then, we were getting ready to move into the Oasis area, and then we got hit again. And so, is that kind of what you said, and so?
We've done, we had already repaired a lot of the access. You can't do the work until you get the access. We had already done some of the access on some of the lower agricultural drains, King Street, we were, we were making, it was full of water. So, the first thing we had to get rid of the water before we established the access to be able to do the repairs. So, we had already entered a lot of the areas and done some of the access things, and we had. had, my understanding is, we only removed the sediment from one or two agricultural drains. So we hadn't done all the work, but we had started to mobilize and to be prepared to do all of the work.
So I guess where I was going, my question was, there's obviously a lot of damage in the entire valley, and there were some things that either you were working on, have completed, that was just related to the first storm, and then the second storm added more things. So I'm trying to get a sense of where we're at, and what are the next items on that list that we're going to be hitting pretty hard? And from what I gathered from your report was that, one is the canal. You had some recommendations on using the contractor to do some of those repairs on the panels.
Sure.
And so that sounds like that's something that we're going to move on pretty quickly to restore that damage there on the canal. You mentioned the highline, the water, the domestic water highline. That sound, sound to me like that was a priority?
The temporary repairs are, it might take a lot longer to get permanent, but we have to stabilize, because it's so wide right now, just the weight itself is putting too much pressure, and it's in the air, so we want to go to the center point and put scaffolding just to take the pressure off.
Sure, so, and like you mentioned, that, that's, that's the sole line that's taking water to Salt City, and that's currently on right now, so it has all that weight on it.
Yes.
So, so you have to relieve some of that, some of that weight, so that's something that you're going to work on. And then the other thing that you mentioned that seemed pretty big was the storm channel. You mentioned the pilot, the pilot channel from Avenue 58 down to 70 something.
Two.
You have to restore that.
Honestly, that, that could take six months. We had that same situation in February of 19, if you recall, it actually was backing up, but it took us months to repair that. So is it important? Yes. Is the work we might have to do in the next one to three weeks? Yes. But as far as emergency work, I wouldn't say that is an emergency work.
Okay, and then...
Or not as quickly.
Okay, so that makes sense. So canal, that, that's not as big of an emergency, but you'll get to it eventually. The highline, you'll create some temporary fix there. And then you did mention that, on this side from the first storm, on Cathedral City, you've, you've kind of hit that area to expose valves, manholes, you've jetted miles of, of sanitation mainline. Is that, is that, did you say that we were pretty much done there, or do we still have a lot of, a lot of work there?
I, I think it's going to take some time to get to a point where we, until all the sediment is removed, I think the city's done a great job. We went in and helped as much as we could last, a week ago Friday. But it's going to take some time to make sure that every backflow, every valve is exposed, every fire hydrant is to the standard that we want. So maintenance will take some time, but from a operational and level of service, everything is operating the way it should. Yeah, our collection system was, did have major issues with the sediment entering the system, but we feel quite confident that we're in really good shape now. That's not to say that that sediment at some point isn't going to work its way down into the collection system over the next two to four weeks. We're expecting additional blockages.
Yeah, and I get that, I was just, and you answered it, I was just trying to get a sense if we've at least established the level of service, and you said yes, so, so that's good. I also want to commend your staff, I know you guys have been busy since the first storm, and there's a lot of damage everywhere, and I know that a lot of you have been working for a lot of days. I also got a lot of, you know, comments, calls, messages, and, and I had to pass those on to you, so, you know, I was calling you in the weekend, and, and you guys did do a great job, you guys are helping out in the community, whether it's on one side of the valley or the other side. And I think people appreciate that, I certainly appreciate that, and I commend you and your staff for all the hard work that you're doing.
Well, again, the, we just manage things, the equipment operators know their job, and I think they do a tremendous job, and I will make sure that I pass that along, because again, you know, I think we got very blessed, both ends, you know, first storm was that end of the valley, this one was more this end of the valley, but they're, the equipment operators will be 12 hours a day for six months probably. And so, you know, it's, even though we're through the worst of it, it's going to continue on. We actually still have damage from a smaller event last August that we're still working our way through, because it's 1,000 square miles and hundreds of miles of canal and things. So I thank you very much, and yeah, I do think that they, all my team does a great job in all the sections, and you know, it just, it's unfortunate that we got beat up, and we were looking forward to a weekend, and then they got beat up again, but I think they did a great job, and they will continue to do so. Again, they're at, they're at Whitewater today, they're all over the valley again today, and they're going to continue to work themselves out of the hole, so thank you.
Thank you, yeah, and I'll just say one more thing, I suspect, as you mentioned that, because we're continuing to deal with this, and we're going to continue to deal with it for the next several months, that probably a lot of us are going to continue to get concerns, you know, get concerns from residents, questions, you know, who can help with this, who can help with that? And so as those come in, we're going to continue to pass those on to you.
Sure, thank you.
And so I think that that's just something that, I mean, that's just the nature of the thing.
Look, we try to send, when an event happens, both events of this magnitude, we try to inspect everything. We thought we did it, you know, it's 1,000 square miles, we're all over the place, hundreds of miles of pipeline, you know, 120 miles of canal. I think we have about 4,000 miles of pipeline overall. So we tried to inspect everything, so we find, we're still finding things ourselves, so if you pass stuff on, we'd appreciate it, honestly, so.
Thank you. Any further comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention a couple of things very quickly. First of all, I wanted to mention that we have Charlie McClendon here in the audience, who's the city manager of Cathedral City, and who's an important partner in this effort. So I appreciate Charlie being here, and I know we're also interested in hearing what Scott has to say in a minute about potential help for our residents. But, but I just wanted to point out, Dan, I can, I can hear the tension and your sense of urgency in your voice about what's going on. So, you know, we really do appreciate, you know, your leadership efforts in this time of crisis, which I know is really important, and, and your team, and I understand that some members of your team actually went out and volunteered on their own time to help clear some mud for some of our residents in Cathedral City, so that really was, you know, way above and beyond, so, you know, kudos to everybody, I really do appreciate that, and want to acknowledge your, your leadership for that and the whole team. I did have just a couple of questions, very quickly, and Vice President Estrada kind of mentioned this as well, but, so we have pretty much restored all services to residents, at least in the Cathedral City area that were...
I'm not aware of anything where we don't have a level of service for our domestic water and our sanitation. We, we had the major outage in Dillon Road and Desert Hot Springs, and then over this weekend, we got hit with, you know, I was trying to, there were domestic lines not working, like Fountain View Spa and some other areas, and I was trying to figure out how the pipeline broke or where it broke, and then I realized it was just power outages that we were taking out portable generators. So the pump wouldn't work because it didn't have power, not because it was a leak. So I, at this point in time, I'm not aware of any situation whereby we're not providing full service.
Okay, just look at your colleagues. And then, and then secondly, the 3.9 million number that, that you've given us, and we saw a few days ago on a memo, based on the description of the damage that was done, seems really low. And I'm wondering if we've not completed the, the, you know, the examination and the fieldwork for what's left to be done, and if there's going to be another opportunity, I think you said there might be a second opportunity. I just, it just seemed, given the scale of what has happened...
Sure.
...to be low.
So, look, just for reference, the event happened Sunday night, so Monday we're inspecting, continued to inspect Tuesday, doing emergency work, and the county wanted preliminary estimates Thursday morning. So we're very comfortable with the damage to Whitewater, because we've done it two times in the last year. This is the third time that we've had to rebuild these channels, and we have a very good pulse on what it takes equipment-wise and operator-wise, and that's about half the 3.9 million. So half the damage was to the Whitewater area. We have the ability to go back and revise those numbers. Everything's being charged to one work order, so we're able to very easily identify exactly what our expenses are for the first event. The second event, we'll, we'll see, but we'll be able to track that down to the hour on equipment, materials, and labor. So whatever that will be, because they were preliminary estimates, we have an opportunity to revise those estimates.
Thank you.
I just, I just want to say, again, thanks to the hardworking CVW employees, it's been two hard weeks. And I do want to say that, you know, living here my entire life, I've seen less water do a lot more damage, and I think that's attributed to, you know, everything that we've done over the last 30 or 40 years, and we continue to do, I mean, how Palm Desert held up, and La Quinta, and Indio, and some of those places got wiped out with just an inch of rain we've had before. And this was a huge event, a hurricane that came through, and I'm very proud at how our facilities did hold up. I mean, the storm channel did its job. I mean, it really did its job, and we could have had a catastrophe here way worse than what we had. And we, although we do have problems, and there's some, some heartache in Cathedral City, and now in Oasis and some, some areas, I think that everybody could be commended, and we'll build on this and figure out some of those areas that did overflow, and get those fixed, and spend the money we need to to get them fixed, so.
Yeah, thank you. I'll pass that on. I guess I would say, the first event, yeah, Cathedral City, the railroad, Interstate 10, all because they don't have flood protection in an area, and this area, Oasis, North Shore, and other, it's, again, they're areas that are unprotected. So I do think that the areas that were protected, the Coves and some of the other areas, and the channel itself...
Where we've had big problems before.
They did a really good job. Yeah, the last hurricane, I believe, was 77 and 76, Kathleen and Dorian, I don't know which one was which.
And the Cove and Palm Desert.
Yeah, they were devastated.
Destroyed.
Yeah, they were destroyed.
It took out, homes were swept away.
Yeah, and now we, we have that massive channel through the reserve from Palm Desert Cove, we have the La Quinta system in place as a result of those storms, so, yeah. We, our system actually did very well.
It did.
And just as a reminder, the...
I would just like to echo, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I would just like to echo what the other directors have said, Dan and Jim, you guys have done an excellent job at managing the crews, and, and the crews, their dedication, you know, the guys out in the field, on the, on the dozers, just an amazing job. And I think Anthony is right, is there's been a lot done to improve the situation over the years, and, and as we can see, there's a lot more to do. So I, I do have a couple of questions in terms of how the, how, if the North Indio projects that are under construction right now, if they were, if they faced any issues, or if there was less rainfall there, and also the recent flood control that was put in around WRP4. You didn't mention any of those, so I'm kind of assuming that they were in decent shape.
Well, thank you again, I'll pass that on to my management team as far as kudos, I do think they did a good job. North Indio is still under construction, so it's a responsibility of the contractor, but I'm not aware of any significant damage. Obviously, there's a lot of cleanup for all the contractors, Alabasi in the channel, North Indio, Oasis, obviously, I haven't heard any reports of any damage from the contractor out there. We're trying to get that commissioned, as we all know. But I, as far as WRP4, it held up fine, we had some power issues, but no flooding around the facility, or nothing extraordinary. As you know, we built that flood control system around it, but it did not breach the channel. So I think, knock on wood, we're in pretty good shape. I will, I will ask David Wilson and others to provide an update on any issues with the contractor, but obviously, they have all risk, whether it be in the channel, North Indio, Oasis, or other, they have all risk insurance for events like this, so. But when we get an update of any damage, we will pass that on to Jim, and he can pass it on to the board.
Great, thank you, Dan, appreciate that.
Yeah, I, I appreciate the comments from the board members, and certainly all the efforts that the staff has gone through to kind of stabilize the areas. As a reminder, the board has asked for a information update on the district's overall flood control, stormwater control, projects and priorities, and we're working through that, probably either in the second meeting in September or the first meeting in October. One of the things I have had to do here is to explain the difference between regional stormwater responsibilities and local drainage. There is a sense that out there that CVWD is responsible for an awful lot, and I just have to recalibrate folks and say, you know, really unfortunate that this happened, however, that's, it's not a CVWD responsibility in some cases. And so that, that's not things people want to hear, but it is part of the responsibility that we have to undertake. As Dan was also saying, despite our regional responsibilities, there is not a lot of resourcing available at this point to undertake those, and we'll get into that discussion when we look at the prioritization of projects still yet to be done. I think a few years ago, we estimated the total responsibility to be over $2 billion. And while we have been successful recently in getting some money from the feds to help prosecute the work in the Indio region, which was a, which was a very high priority, we have to make sure that the lower ends of the stormwater system can handle the flows that we will ultimately bring in from the upper sections, so that we don't create more problems by working the upper first, and then completely inundating the lower sections. So that's why Indio was, was a higher priority than perhaps 8,000 Palms or even Morongo. Morongo, which did receive a significant amount of water this time, is also a shared responsibility between CVWD, the county, and the state. And so we've got to work that collaboratively with those other agencies before we're actually able to move forward with anything productive in those areas. So again, it's, it is unfortunate that we were hit back-to-back with such significant storms, thousand-year storms. In a lot of cases, the district's design parameters and program is based around the 100-year storm, which is a much smaller, but could still be devastating event. To go to 1,000 years would require much more resourcing than, than we've, that we can probably imagine. But I think I will echo the board's comments, that staff has done a very good job. And I guess my one takeaway is, I was out on Ramon, and I noticed the stormwater, the sanitation line we were working, is not actually in a road, it's over in the dirt, which is why I saw these excavators and dozers over between Ramon and the freeway, and actually put together that it was not something, typically our, our lines are in the road right away. This was not, which kind of explains why it got inundated with so much sediment.
Yeah, we had a hard time getting VAC trucks even into the area, so we mobilized dozers and other equipment, even to try to get to the facilities to be able to, you know, un, you know, take, take out the blockages, or remove the blockages. But, you know, Bob Hope Interchange wasn't there when those collection lines were in place, and they go, they go to the north side of the freeway and then go down Varner to WRP7, so, yeah.
Yeah, and, no, I really look forward to that update on the, on stormwater and priorities, and, and also getting myself a better sense of what's regional and what's local. That is something that I think a lot of us struggle with, not just up here on the dais, but also the community in general. I imagine, you know, as, as we talked about, examples like the Cove area where, you know, that flow's channeled into a nice structure, you know, and, and hearing that flows came from the Chocolate Mountains, you know, that flow had to go somewhere. And so what are the opportunities to also build similar regional structures in that area? And, you know, taking into account the fact that, that, you know, Jim's right, we have very limited resources to be able to, you know, pay for all of that. We have millions, hundreds of millions of dollars' worth of infrastructure, and a very low funding source, right? That's all 100% tax-based. And so those are the challenges that, that we face as a, as a district, as a valley...
And so, those are the challenges that, that we face as a, as a district, as a valley, and, uh, I do look forward to just learning more about that, and, and, uh, thinking about how to move forward here in the next, you know, probably for the next 10 years, 20 years, so.
Sure.
Any other questions?
No, I may just do it from Scott. I'm ready.
So, so with that, we'll move on to Scott. Thank you, thank you, Dan.
Good afternoon, Vice President Estrada, members of the board. Scott Burritt from the, the Director of Service and Communication. Um, so, as you know, some members of the community have asked what CVWD can do to assist, um, with potential high-water bills they might receive, um, in the next coming months. And, you know, I say potential because, um, customers in the North Cathedral City area, for example, haven't received their water bills since this event. They would be going out probably starting next week, um, on the 11th. So, um, I do have three proposed actions, or three, um, policies that we would fall back on that, uh, provide some good assistance to customers. And the first is CVWD's domestic water regulations provide for tier-grade adjustments. So, those adjustments would be granted for somebody, um, in our regulations for, uh, issues such as a leak on a property or other high consumption. And when customers receive this adjustment, and this is, we have a process in place for this, uh, the higher tiers are recalculated to the tier-two rate generally, and I say generally because it's recalculated to their historical consumption. So, generally, uh, customers who are always in tier-two would see the tier-five rate reduced to tier-two, which would be $1.23 per unit instead of $6.79. So, that could provide a lot of relief to customers. Um, and we do anticipate some adjustment requests from this, the area that received large mud flows. Um, they would result not only in cleanup efforts, but I suspect there's going to be a lot of, uh, broken irrigation system components out there as people are cleaning up their property and hitting sprinkler heads and, uh, their irrigation lines. I suspect there's going to be a lot of, um, there are going to be some high bills related to, to those issues. So, I would just, um, propose that the board, uh, allow a temporarily, temporarily extending the adjustments to the cleanup part of it, um, for homes, and, um, you know, this wouldn't set a precedent for the board. Um, you'd be considering, you know, any future event, the board would consider on a case-by-case basis. Um, and I wouldn't propose extending this to cleaning up pools, for example, or refilling pools. Um, we do generally provide, uh, leak adjustments for pools when there's actually a leak in the pool, um, because I, I think we receive a lot of wind events, and we receive, you know, um, storms that do cause debris to go into pools, and so, um, I would really kind of keep it focused on cleaning up properties and cleaning up houses. Uh, just a little background, the tiered-rate adjustment policy has been in place since right after the start of tiered rates. We formalized them in the domestic water regulations in 2015. Uh, the adjustments granted under this policy reduce the domestic water fund, but that's taken into account through the cost of service process, um, so there's really no impact on, on the domestic fund. Um, there's a standard process already in place. Customers can easily go to our website and apply for the adjustments, um, and they can call customer service if, if they have any questions about it, any customer impacted. And the second, uh, second program we have in place to assist customers is our Help to Others program. It provides $150, um, credit to their bill, and that was designed to cover the monthly service charge for approximately a year, um, and that's funded through non-rate revenue. Um, customers can call our customer service, uh, center again, and we'll include, you know, we can refer them to United Way. Um, we also can refer them to the Low Income Water Assistance Program, uh, that provides additional funding for high-water bill, or for any water bills, um, and also Inland SoCal United Way. They have a 2-1-1 line where customers can get assistance. And for elderly customers, we can work with the Riverside County Office on Aging, and we've actually partnered with Cathedral City on referring customers in the past, and, um, have worked very well with them. Um, and the third, the third option is that we, we generally provide, um, payment extensions, payment plans, um, waived delinquency fees when customers, um, are unable to make their payment, and this is all part of board policy and state law, so, um, this is how we propose working with customers. Um, and really, the only tweak to the policy would be extending it, extending, um, our tiered-rate adjustment to help properties clean up over the next 60-day period, the next two billing cycles. And I think that would, we haven't received requests yet, but-
We don't have the bills yet.
We, exactly.
Well, and if I may, Mr. Vice President- Go ahead. As you know, this is not on the agenda for an action item, uh, so we would want to fall back on what Scott was talking about in terms of past practice, and this being within the authority, the purchasing threshold authority of the general manager, and that you do have some experience of doing adjustments and working with customers when they have high-water bills. And because we're not exactly sure what these bills are going to be, or what the explanation will be for them, I think there's enough discretion already in the rules and regs for customer service to take these things into account. If there's going to be a major, uh, financial commitment or something like that, then we can bring that back to the board, but A, because it's, it's not on the agenda, B, there's a past practice, and C, we're not sure exactly what the water bill financial impacts will be, and then D, that the general manager does have some discretion here. I, I, unless there's some objection from the board, I think that we move forward, as Scott described, and come back if something more serious needs to be done.
Yeah, I, I personally don't have any objection. Um, I was going to make a comment, and I don't know if, I think my comment, I don't know if it would put, put this where you actually had to bring it back, because it falls outside the policy. But I, I just had a, a general thought about, um, how difficult would it be, or what would be the, the impact if, let's say, we were able to create some sort of like GeoGrid, and said, hey, we know this is the area. Take, 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 for example, Cathedral City, where, where I think we, we have a sense of what communities are the ones that, that, uh, experienced, um, the, the, the worst impact, you know, that they're, they, they have a lot of mud, they, they have a lot of cleanup efforts. And what would it take for us to create like a GeoGrid and say, this is what's in? And rather than wait for customers there to make a request, um, just kind of automatically do it and say, and, and of course, taking into account what, what you're doing in the process already, which is acknowledging the historical use, right? So, if their historical use was tier-two, then you hold them in tier-two. If it was tier, tier-three, then you hold them in tier-three.
Right.
Um, I, I just don't know how difficult that would be, you know, maybe, maybe it's, it's too much. Um, but that was, uh, something that I was thinking about, is, you know, could, could we do a GeoGrid? That way, we can also eliminate, uh, potential, other potential requests that are outside that area. You mentioned folks might, might wanting to reach over for, you know, I need to refill my pool, and, um, maybe that had nothing to do with, with the storm event, and that just some other issue. And so, I don't know if it'd be better to just, from our side, just create, uh, an area, um, and then move from there, so, just a thought.
May I?
Sure.
Okay, so I would, you know, there's, there were CVWD staff that lived, you know, nowhere near storm events that had flooding inside their homes. Um, and I know there was, there was North Cathedral City, there was Spanish Walk, there were Thousand Areas and 1,000 Palms, so I, you know, I don't know who else might have been impacted, you know? So, I mean, we could look at a couple of those areas, we could look at North Cathedral City, for example, um, but I don't know that that would be fair to all the customers, um, you know, the ones who maybe aren't in that GeoGrid but were still impacted.
Okay, well, I, fair, fair response. Um, if you feel comfortable with, with what you've recommended, and the amount of work that that would create, it's, it's at your discretion, we already have the policy, that seems to be like, uh, something that would work. I just was thinking if there was a better way to do it, but it only creates more issues, then, then I'm, I'm okay with what you've proposed.
Yeah, I believe, and I could be wrong, I'd have to rely on, uh, council or staff, but, um, to set up that GeoGrid probably would require bottom, board authorization, because we don't have that, I don't have that authority now to, to separate a specific geographic area based on, on something else. And I certainly wouldn't want to do that without informing the board, so getting the board to approve that right off.
Yeah. I think you're on the right track. I mean, you're, you're thinking the way we're thinking. Let's, let's go help the folks that need to be helped, and, and, you know, if it gets bigger than what you, you, that, that, what you're authorized, then we'll come back to the board and we'll make it happen.
I don't think there's going to be any, I don't think it's going to be substantial, to be honest.
Yeah, and the only reason I brought it up was not really to re, not to reduce the help, but to increase the help, because I, what I, I was getting at was, we're automatically doing it versus having to wait for folks to come and ask for it. You know, some folks might not, uh, know that that's available, they might just pay it. Um, you know, there might be a number of reasons why they miss it, right? They don't know that that's an option. And so, I was just thinking, rather than wait for them to kind of initiate the process, would it be better for us to automatically enroll them into this concept? And so, that was, that was my only suggestion, was, it was a thought about, you know, how, how can we make this available quicker?
Right. So, as we go through the billing process, we have, we review accounts that have exceptionally high consumption. So, as we're looking at that, we could, especially next week, when those bills start going out, we can see if there's patterns and contact people in those, kind of on a more proactive basis.
Yeah, I think that, I'm glad to hear that, because the calls that I've been getting, not only from residents that are in that North Cathedral City area, but also from a couple of the elected officials on the council, is that people, they're in a high-anxiety state as it is, they really don't know what to do. So, I think just thinking that they're going to rely on, you know, the website or, or some other routine mechanism to be able to figure out how they're going to get help isn't going to work. I think we have to be more aggressive. Um, I know, uh, Charlie Anna talked about a newsletter item going out, that maybe you could include it in that as well, but my concern is that the information gets out there-
Right.
-so that they're not stymied. So, it sounds like you've got that covered, so.
And we can certainly work together to get information out to the community about our, about all of these three programs.
That works.
That works, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Well, you don't have any more questions, Scott. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Sir, any other questions, comments?
No, I think that concludes the business that we expected to prosecute.
Okay, Director Nelson, are you still on the line?
I am. I don't have any further comments. A good meeting, and, uh, it sounds like the-
Okay.
... customer service department is looking good.
Okay, with that, we will conclude the meeting. It's 12:34. Like, like any other thing.